Please state your name and address, sir.
Thank you. Attorney Joe Helm, W 131 N 7955, Country Club Drive, Menominee Falls. It seems in recent years that we've had seen a distance in some respects disconnect between the citizenry and their elected officials. And it would seem that there's no greater example of that than with regard to the school boards in our communities. It would also seem that this distance seems to be growing with regard to the recognition of and responsiveness to the opinions and concerns of the voters. I believe it's imperative that the voters have the most direct and effective way to elect someone to office, to hold them accountable, and to remove them from office in any given election. I have personally experienced both the at-large and numbered seats methods of elections. My early terms as village trustee here in Menominee Falls were during the at-large method days, and my later trustee term and village president term under the numbered seat method. From those experiences, I believe that the numbered seat methodology is clearly the most effective option. Each elected official needs to stand on their own merit and their own performance, not ride on the coattails of some other popular candidate. Two candidates running for one numbered seat, requiring that each candidate proclaim what they stand for, explain how they will govern and defend their actions, giving the citizens a definitive choice who will be elected to that seat. There is no greater way to ensure that the will of the voter and the accountability of the elected official. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Hi.
I'm sorry, I can't see.
That's all right. Nick Katers, N 72, W 12823, Good Hope Road. So I'm going to use the analogy of musical chairs to describe the at-large versus numbered seats issue. So at-large, it's like a regular game of musical chairs, you have a primary and knock some people out, but it's a little messy, that's democracy. Numbered seats, it's like the current board brought the seats to the party, they have first dibs on the seats, and they give a little booty bump to everyone as they go by so that they have an advantage. It doesn't increase competitiveness to have all of these channels where, you know, an incumbent has an advantage over the one person that they're facing off. The majority that supported this back in the July meeting, they're afraid of competition. Democracy is messy. You don't want to get elbows to get out of the lane, right? You don't want to get, you can't stand the heat, you get out of the kitchen. So to me, hearing all the great things that the district has done, it's being mired by this rushed process for something that I don't think will actually benefit most of us. So I oppose the numbered seat change. Thank you.
Next, please, next, please.
Hi, my name is Kova Brown, and my address is North 89 West 15791 Main Street, Menominee Falls. I just wanted to make sure that people understand the importance of voting no today. Five of the seven board members who we currently have were hand-selected by the Taxpayers Association, who also came up with this agenda to make our school board elections numbered seats versus what they've been all along, which is at-large. If you don't know who this group is, ask a friend, I'm sure they can guide you to someone who does. These five board members were also funded by the Waukesha County Republican Party. If you're Ann Pitt and funded by an agency, don't you become obligated to them? Of course you do, which is why we're here in this moment. By voting no, you are making sure that these elections remain fair for anyone and everyone who wants to serve in this capacity. This allows our board to be a collective of diverse minds who problem-solve to serve our student body in a way that helps them receive an excellent education in an excellent school system. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, next speaker.
My name is Rose Clancy, I live at North 81, 13286 Fairway Court in Menominee Falls. I have three main points to make this evening. First of all, before I start, I would like to thank literally everybody in this room for the time that they're taking, the interest they're showing, on behalf of the students of Menominee Falls. The first point I would make is that I have not really seen anything definitive that says this particular change will have a benefit for students. It may, it may not, I haven't seen it. And that should be our number-one priority in selecting a change.
Please, please, let's listen.
My second point is that a change of this kind and magnitude deserves a much larger hearing than just this meeting tonight. It should be put out in public forums in the community for, I think Mr. Helm's referenced the fact that voters in this district should have more input. And you're right, they should, and it should not be just at this meeting tonight. My third point is, I was fortunate enough to work for Milwaukee Public Schools, Wauwatos Public Schools, Mayville Public Schools, and I helped begin this Kids Inc. program here in Menominee Falls. We have been through an incredibly turbulent year this last year, with between COVID, between the elections, between everything else. And I made the rep point at a board meeting, I think it was back in June. Let's not make any major changes right now. We finally have a good administrative staff in place, we need time to heal, we need time to talk with each other, and this is not the way to do it. This is too divisive, and it's not helpful, and I urge people to vote no.
Thank you, thank you. Gentlemen.
Hello, this is Jim Vissaki, I live on N 61, W 14389, Books by Drive. And this is simple, there's a lot of heated debates going on on one side or another, political agendas, et cetera. However, the very simple line for me and my family and my kids is that, at-large, each board member represents the entire district. When you have numbered seats, individual members will then represent their individual districts, individual voices, individual interests, and then they will actually...
Quiet, let's listen.
Everybody gets their time, come up here to the podium. And so therefore, on the numbered seats agenda, you're going to have open and fair debates instead of closed rooms, closed board decisions. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Katrina Moldenhauer, West 160, North 8452, Donald Court, Menominee Falls. I just wanted to say something that's not controversial, hopefully everyone can agree with this. I do support the change, that every board member will be held accountable for their actions and what they vote for and what they bring to our school district for our children. For those who are against it, whether you are a conservative, liberal, middle, I don't care, why wouldn't you want your board member to represent you and be held accountable for what is being voted for? Our new school board wanting accountability is actually refreshing, because the previous one didn't do enough. That's all I have to say. So please consider voting yes.
Gentlemen.
Nathan Greenleaf, N 6844, or, sorry, N 125, W 125, N 6844. I got it, I promise it. Know my address. So I would just like, as a point of clarity, this is not an apportionment piece, this is not geographical districts, that is not what's happening. These seats are not going to be geographically specific. I think the statement from the board president was that that would just be too hard. And so these individual seats would then represent the whole district. What this seated system does is take choice away from the voters. If I have three available seats and five available candidates, I can pick any three from there. Were we to move to this seated system, I would have, I would have an up-or-down choice on one seat, an up-or-down choice on the other, and the uncontested seat would get to hold their seat without any accountability at all. So let me tell you, if you're looking for accountability, the at-large requires the candidates to present what they have done properly, what they plan on doing in the future, what good they have to offer, as opposed to a false choice between, you know, one person or another, right? That's not, that's not how you build diversity of thought in a board, that's not how you build diversity of thought within an educational system. So this change is not in the best interest of students. In fact, I recall the board, I believe it was Carrie asking that, either Carrie or Melinda, asking the board president what the benefit to the children was, and there was a dead silence afterwards. So if you're looking for a better school district, a larger diversity of thought, real accountability for every single person that is up for election, leave it at-large, vote no on this change for the election process. Thank you.
Hi there, Jason Klimas, W 145, N 5392, Thornhill Drive, Menominee Falls. I have kids in the district. All due respect, the quote was slightly different from what you said. The president said the geographic region was complicated and confusing. There was no other statement because there was a refusal to grant any interviews to the Journal Sentinel, not only from the president, from other board members to explain this to everybody. I'm voting no, I encourage everybody to vote no. I also wish people that I know who could not be here because it's Monday at 7 o'clock on a school night are home with the kids so that they can go to bed and get to school tomorrow. I wish this was on a referendum so everybody could have had all day to come out and vote no. Instead, I'll do it for the people that I can. Thank you, I look forward to it.
Gentlemen.
My name is Chris Slinker, N 78, W 13022, Country Club Court, Menominee Falls. You know, a couple of points that I want to make that others haven't made. Obviously, the lines have been drawn here. Under the current system, where you have a pooled group of candidates and the top three vote-getters win, those two that did not get the most votes get put into office. Whether you agree with that or not, that is not accountability. Now, yeah, our current system, let me try to explain this so you do understand. When you run in Menominee Falls...
Quiet, let's have respect.
The top three vote-getters get elected to the school board out of a pool of candidates. That's who wins, some of which have not gotten the most votes in that race. Some come in second, some come in third. If you have a numbered seat, which is not a district, the top vote-getter wins, like how we elect all of the other seats we vote for in this country, from senate to congress to assembly to every other elected position. Now, the other thing I want to mention is, under the current system, many of you who are opposed to this have lost consistently. Conservatives have won every single election in the last three terms that they've run under the current system. I'm not sure if you are a liberal, there's plenty in the room, and you think that the top-three vote-getter system's good for you, it's okay, but the truth is, this is the fairer system. One versus one, clear positions of topics, not a pooled group of voters when you ask all of the electorate to have to vote for three of many. You think that's clear? You think that's accountable? It is not. Stand behind what you truly believe and win, and be accountable, and run one candidate against one candidate. Win that way, instead of trying to confuse. It's a simple choice. If you want to keep running in elections like we have, we know what the outcome has been.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Kathy Oleg, N 77, W 15424, Crossway Drive. I'd like to remind everyone that our district uses continuous improvement, we utilize benchmarking to consistently make our district better. So I'd like to bring up some points that Dan Ross Miller, Director of Government Relations for Wisconsin Association of School Boards, mentioned in a recent Journal Sentinel article. Least common is a seven, there are seven school districts out of 400 districts in our state that use, where candidates run for a specific seat number that doesn't align with a specific geographic area. I do not see the need to align with village board, that is, a municipal entity, we're a school district, so perhaps we should be with the majority of school districts in our state that use an at-large system. Furthermore, a political scientist, or a political science professor at UW-Madison said head-to-head races also provide more incentive for candidates to directly attack their opponents. We don't need any more attack, we don't need any more division in our community, we should be united behind our students. At an at-large race, candidates might hope voters will choose them alongside a variety of other candidates, so attacking other candidates could hurt their own odds. I'm just going to read directly from the article because this is really good information. "If you're competing across all other candidates, it's not as likely that you're going to be singling out one person for an attack. Rather, you're more likely to be making a positive appeal to your voters about why you should vote for me," Cannon said. "Head-to-head races could also call attention, more attention, to partisan differences," he said, "which could possibly benefit the majority political party." I encourage everyone to vote for what's best for kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Laurence Trimble. I have been a resident of Menominee Falls for 21 years. Some of you are lifelong residents of Menominee Falls. I came up to speak about my 21 years here. I have four children in this, what I consider amazing, school district. And all four of my children, my fourth is 15, she's a sophomore this year, they're all excelling, they've all excelled academically, they've all excelled as human beings in this community. We have a great, great support system here in Menominee Falls together, if we all work together, and continue to leave things how they are. My point to this is, it's so important to make this about the students and the kids, leave politics out of this. This is not a political vote, nobody gives a damn about politics.
Let her speak, please, please.
This is about our kids. I've put four through the school system, again, they've all excelled, and I do believe that this community has helped me raise my kids to be great human beings, they're able to now leave Menominee Falls and be able to function in places like Los Angeles, California, Chapel Hill, North Carolina. My kids can function in Florida, they can function in New York City, they can function anywhere. And it has to do with the education they've gotten here and the support that we've had in our community. And it needs to be going that way, and it has to stop being divisive, because I do believe that if we continue to go the way we are, it's going to go downhill. Our kids will not be prepared for their future with the road that we are trying to take. Let's just continue to do what we've been doing, we've been excelling. We've been excelling, you guys, keep it that way.
Thank you. Gentlemen.
William Goddimer, West 173, North 8916, Apple Blossom Lane. I am a senior at Menominee Falls High School. You may have seen me, I believe I was on the presentation, I was not here for it, but I believe I was on the presentation, so you know that, like, I'm actually here. Now, I cannot vote in this election, although I wish I were about three months older because I would be voting in it. I do want to say, however, that I was very conflicted over what I would, over what I actually wanted us to proceed with. I wasn't sure if I was going to go with voting yes, I obviously can't vote, but endorsing yes or endorsing no. Now, that might be quite a surprise to some of the Republicans and more conservative voices in my community, as many of you guys know that I am not conservative. But I asked myself the question, what supports the students like myself the most? I looked at numbered seats. I see that we do numbered seats in congress and for the presidency and for everything, really, but this is a local election. Local elections are not federal elections. We're looking at a completely different demographic, we're looking at our students, not America as a whole. So I asked myself, what is more important, what is most important for democracy? Like, what method works best for our democracy? And then the answer was very simple. The answer is, we cannot vote for this. This is a terrible idea that will bring away diversity from our schools, that will bring away diversity of thought from our board, and will force us into single-party authoritarianism of our board. It is true, it is true.
All right, let him finish, please.
And I know Slinker does not like that. I know he does not, but it is true. I endorse and I support everyone voting no for this decision. Thank you.
Go ahead, Danielle Benetti, N 62, W 14449, Rolling Ridge Drive. So I've heard throughout the evening a few times about how it's important that the candidates stand on their merit all by themselves, tied to no one else, but I ask then, why did the last three candidates run all together in the last election? Why did three candidates feel so strongly that they needed to band together? And why is that different now? Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Jefferson Davis, West 169, North 8630, Sheridan Drive, Menominee Falls. I would like to speak in the two minutes that I have left from three perspectives. This is a unifying opportunity for this community to come together over this issue. Number two, this is for the kids. And number three, if we do have, which we fortunately don't have in Menominee Falls, an administration team that goes rogue when it comes to critical race theory or mandating...
Please, please, continue.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if we have that issue come up, if we have mask mandates or jab mandates or the 1619 project or defund the police and we teach that...
Please, respect.
I think I showed respect for all of those people that are making that noise. I would ask that I get 10 more seconds, please. I've been interrupted several times, ma'am.
Continue, please.
Thank you very much. So when you look at that perspective, what is best for the kids? What is best for the kids is the administration, the parents, the teachers, and the students. What is best for them? To come together on whatever the issue is, I just named four or five of them that seem to be popping up every single day, and it's not good. Thank goodness we don't have that here in Menominee Falls. Number two, what do we do if we have an administration that does go rogue and we've got board members that say, well, that's okay, they can just do what they want? I'm not saying that's what happened in Menominee Falls, but it could under the current system. And then finally, can we just stop with the name-calling and the insinuations and the diversions and the distractions?
Please.
Thank you. Can we just come together and just have an open, frank, honest, candid conversation? We may not agree, but can we agree to respectfully disagree? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. This is Jody Lau. I live at 154 N 6245, Marvel Drive. I have a daughter who's an eighth grader, and I have a son who just entered 4K. I'm going to go off the record a little bit, say, critical race theory, really offensive. Please don't do that. If you really believe we need to come together, please look up what it actually is.
Can you please address?
And the fact that it is not taught in elementary school.
Please address the seating number question.
Sorry, I'm sorry. This is getting a little frustrating. I think one thing, and it's been discussed a couple of times, but the word is optics. Why now? Why are we changing things now? I don't think we've got a good answer to that. I have not heard anything that tells me this is a good reason to make a change. I don't think we should do it, and I hope the majority agrees with me. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Michelle Divalis, West 182, North 8270, Georgetown Drive. Last spring was my fifth election, so nine years serving this community. You have to bear with me if you've watched a school meeting before, you know I get emotional. I would have loved to have one direct challenger to come against my nine-year service to this community, but that didn't happen. They ran as a block, I was left out in left field, right field, whichever field you want to put me in. They didn't have to challenge my record. I would have loved to have a numbered seat, they would have had to choose me to come against, come against my service, my records, my votes for the last nine years. That's why.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Can't tell, can't tell. Go ahead.
Hi, Grace Howard, W 186 and 8869, Duke Street. I've been thinking about this vote thing for a few weeks since I saw the recording of the board meeting where they proposed it and had a little discussion about it. And I'll admit, at first I thought, yeah, and numbered seats, that seems good, right? Because of some of the points other people have made today about one against one, and you can go and look at that person who is the incumbent and go after them individually. But I will tell you that, on further thought, I just don't think that the one-on-one is really going to get the best, it's like the cream isn't going to rise to the top. If we think about, if there's, someone gave an example earlier of five people for three seats, the three people with the most votes get the seats. As opposed to, let's say, for example, in race number two, you have two terrible, terrible options. One of those terrible people is going to win that seat. But when it's, when it's vote for the best three that you like, you get the best three that everybody likes, and that just makes more sense to me. And my second point is that I think, pardon me, the last thing we need is an opportunity for more adversity and fighting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pelzer?
Eric Pelzer, North 95, W 16587, Richmond Drive, Menominee Falls. Boy, look at what I did. So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna start out, and I want to start a little bit higher upstream, and, you know, I've heard, I've had this question asked, how does this benefit the kids? And I would say this, I think the single most important thing in a representative republic is how we elect our representatives. And all I really wanted to do by bringing this to the public is to have this, to have everybody come to this meeting to voice their opinion, to give their reasons why they wanted it one way or the other. And that's what I did. For me personally, I thought a numbered seat system was a better system. Now, I've been accused in email, social media, of wanting to maintain power and wanted to, you know, make a career out of sitting on the school board, I can assure you, nothing could be further from the truth. And just to address, I believe another speaker came up and accused several board members of being funded by the Republican Party. I can assure you that I spent about $1,000 of my own money running my election to serve the community. I didn't receive a penny from anybody else. I'm not beholden to anybody else. So I wanted to state that publicly. One point that wasn't really brought up but was touched upon, that the reason that I wanted numbered seats is because I felt like it would create... I wanted numbered seats is because I felt like it would create a more stable board. And here's why. I think a numbered-seat system disincentivizes people from running as groups and as blocks, and actually compels every candidate to run as an individual for an individual seat. That was my reasoning behind it, that was my logic behind it. Some agree, some disagree. I think we need to keep the debate civil. I'm happy with the conversation that we've had. And, you know, everybody should just vote their conscience. I think that's what this is all about, that's what this country is all about.
Thank you. Next speaker?
John Gooer, W147 and 6910, Woodland Drive. I move we end debate and call the question.
I'm looking for a motion to limit debate and call the question. Are you making the motion?
Yes.
To limit the debate and call the question. Chris Slinker?
No, we need a two-thirds vote.
So we will need a two-thirds vote on this, for the motion to call the vote. So we're voting on Mr. Slinker's motion to call the question, okay? Those in favor of calling the question, please stand. Let's see, darn thing. I think I have two-thirds? Pardon me? Okay, so I need to do, because that's two-thirds, right? Yeah. Okay, that lives two-thirds, so we will call the question. So we'll go back to the original motion. We have a motion and a second to change the current voting method used for our school district Menominee Falls board member elections to numbered seats instead of at-large voting. If you are in favor of changing the current board member election process to numbered seats, please stand. You should have those present. Do I get to vote? There's yellow and green.
What color?
It's not white. It's either green, use the green, I'm sorry, use the green.
What's that? I can't, come to the mic, I can't hear you.
Right, because this is what we have, we're given.
Parliamentarian, please explain the process by which we switched to paper ballots. It was not posted. All that was posted was that it was a vote. We stand up, we have what looks to be an outcome, and now we're switching to paper. Please explain.
Yes, sir. I think we want to have an accurate...
I, I, sorry, I was addressing the parliamentarian, so I'll stand back.
Yes, thank you. We'd like to have an accurate count here, and the only way to do that without counting like we did before, because it looks like it may be close, is to have paper...
No, but that's not what was posted on the website, that it looks like it may be close, so...
Mr. Parliamentarian?
Yes, sir.
The ballots distributed were not numbered. How many ballots?
Were not what?
Were not numbered. How many ballots were distributed?
Three.
Residents of the district got ballots.
Right, three. Stand in vote if you want to, and then we'll decide from there.
Only residents.
Those are them.
Only the residents of the district got ballots.
He can't hear you.
I am advised that only residents of the district were given ballots. People who are not residents were not. So you're saying, sir, that people could be voting twice?
All right, let's do a standing vote. Let's do a standing vote.
Okay. Yes, sir.
All right, please, please?
We're going to do a standing vote.
Yes.
The issue with the standard count is anybody could have walked in at any point in time and standard counted, and standard counted.
Order? All right, please?
Both the reasons for the ballots were subject to the count, and each individual resident was given a ballot after they showed the ID. Why is there supposed to be a motion that took both of them out and have us come about? Why?
Please, please have a seat. Everybody have a seat. Hang on a second, hang on a second. We will do a, take a standing vote. Again, we will have, if you are in favor of changing the current board member election process to numbered seats, please indicate by standing, if you want to change numbered seats, by standing now. Please, can I have the electors count? The, the people, I can't see them.
If, let me, let me make, let me make a point. There's, there's been a few questions about who's, who's a resident, who's not a resident. There is a statutory process. You can challenge an individual in here who you believe is not a resident, and that individual has to swear an oath that they are. So we're going to follow the process and do the standing votes, we're going to count them, and then we're going to proceed the process accordingly, okay?
I would like to know what the total number is, and I would like to compare that to the standing vote total at the end. I would like to make that motion.
Do we have those numbers? Do we have those numbers? We already have a motion on the table right now for a vote. Okay, please count the standing votes.
Or we can do that, everybody hold up their ID when they stand, hold it on a ballot and they stand.
Can you please order, please? People are counting. Where's she going? Yeah, wait for shelter. Kim, you have them all?
Yeah.
Okay, can I, okay, quiet, please? If you're not in favor, not in favor of changing the board member election process to numbered seats, please stand. And remain standing until you get counted. Sorry, folks, remain standing. Can I have them all sit? Okay, we have the results here of the standing vote. Total possible votes was 469. Yes to changing to numbered system, 157, 157. No to not changing to numbered system, 312. Quiet, please, quiet, quiet. The motion has carried. The vote has carried, sorry. 312, Danase won.